Good evening, everyone. We'll call this meeting of the committee to hold quarter at 5:30 PM and take a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the coordinator please call the roll? Ms. Pearson? Mr. Rollins?
Here.
Ms. Mohammed?
Here.
Ms. McCullough?
Here.
Mr. Siegel?
Here.
Mr. Connor?
Here.
Ms. Stanford?
Here.
With six members present and one absent, we have a quorum. Thank you. Before we go any further, we always thank Connor Childers, who works behind the scenes to produce the board's broadcast on Channel 20. Is there something different back there tonight? I thought I saw Connor. Okay. I just wanted to make sure we have the right acknowledgement. Other than that, when we have presentations, I'd like to remind everyone to please hold your questions until the end. And let's look at the meeting minutes from July 12th. You've had them ahead of time. Did anybody have any changes, corrections, additions? See a lot of head shakes. Is there a consensus to approve? Yay, yay, and yay? All right. We'll move on to internal/external stakeholder committee. Ms. Mohammed will lead the internal/external stakeholder committee in this portion of the meeting.
Thank you, Mrs. McCullough. Again, my name is Cameron Mohammed, and today I'll be giving you all updates regarding our stakeholder committee. First off, we'd like to always begin our report by showing our agenda for the stakeholders committee for next year. Give everybody a moment to glance at that. And then, next up, first on our agenda, I would like to ask Faniqa Hughes, who is our Equity and Opportunity Coordinator for RPS, to come and talk to us about the student and principal equity listening sessions.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Hello. My name is Faniqa Hughes, and I'm the Equity and Opportunity Coordinator for RPS. I've been here since October of last year. And I'm just going to give a brief summary of the last student listening session we did. It was with the principals, which was something different and unique, because prior to that, those listening sessions were done just with the students and Dr. Brunson and myself. So, just want to start off and just quickly remind everybody of our equity vision, just to interrupt the predictability of the student outcomes based on our ZIP codes. We were focusing on student belonging, and so I wanted to try to put in the standards of practice in this, because practice number five is specifically that, student belonging. And we wanted the principals to get an idea of how the students felt they belonged, or the reasons why they felt they didn't belong. And so, we want to focus on that and give the principals the opportunity to hear that and then be able to take action based off of what they heard. A little bit of the demographics. We had eight students present for this particular meeting. These students were taken from the students that we had on our district equity circle team, student leadership team. The students represented grades six through 12. We had six schools represented. Three of them were middle schools, three of them were high schools. We asked a series of five questions. These questions came off of the Panorama Student Survey that's given to students from grade six to 12. We specifically focused on the student belonging section of Panorama. So, the first question is, do you feel the people at your school understand you as a person? The second question we asked is, how connected do you feel to the adults at your school? The third question we asked is, do you feel like the students and staff show you respect in your school? Fourth question, do you feel like you matter to others at your school? And the final questions overall, do you feel like you belong at your school? These were the themes that came from the students as they began to answer the questions. The students felt like they needed more representation in the schools and programs. They wanted to see more people that looked like them. They also wanted mutual respect between students and teachers. I particularly liked this particular theme, because when we opened up the floor for the principals to ask questions, the first question that was asked was, what does respect look like for you? And sometimes, we don't know what respect looks like. We just assume that the other person knows what it means to be respectful. So, the students had an opportunity to tell the principals, what does it look like to be and feel respected? The students also would like to be able to be at a school where their identities can be affirmed and accepted. And finally, they need to be heard and listened to. Even after that, as we accompanied the students back to the schools, they each all said, "We want to do this again, and we want to get in front of the teachers." So, that was the themes from that meeting. And that's it. Do I have any questions?
Thank you so much for that update, Ms. Hughes. I would like to ask a couple of questions if that's okay. So, first and foremost, I just want to say that this is very important feedback for us to receive as board members, because it lets us know about the voices of our students as well as principals. And so, now that we've captured all of this, what will be the next action steps of what we're going to do with this data that we've compiled?
Sure. So, of course, with the changeover for the new Chief DI Officer, we've been having this conversation. I've been talking to him about some of the student listening sessions we've been doing and giving him some of the data. The first step is that we're going to start talking to principals and having some listening tours with them, so we can find out what their needs are, and also go over some of this information that we found out from last year, so we can begin together to work with them to make actionable steps of what we need to do next. That's pretty much where we're at right now, and it'll keep, we'll keep doing what we need to do as time go on, so.
Thank you. And my next question is, is there anything in particular that us as board members can be doing to assist or to support what you all are trying to do in your office?
Sure. I'm sure that if we put the call out, sometimes to come out and maybe come and be a part of the listening sessions, to get some of that feedback from students, maybe even have some one-on-one meetings with our new Chief DI Officer. If you get an opportunity to talk to principals, to see how it's going in their schools, to see what their needs are, that sort of thing would be very, very supportive for us.
Thank you. Do any other board members have any questions, Ms. McCullough?
I do. You said this was principals and students, because you gave the demographics of the students, but I'm not sure what principal group was represented.
Sure. So, this was the final all principals meeting that they had on May 25th. So, it was elementary, high school, middle school. Principals were represented that day. And so, what we did is, sometimes when we do listening sessions, students, they don't always feel like they can say or answer the questions when the adult is in the room. So, all the ones that we held prior to that, we never had principals present. So, this time, we actually pulled in a few students to have this session in front of the principals. And the questions were questions, they weren't brand-new questions. They've all seen them before, because all these students have taken the Panorama survey before. So, it was questions that we knew they would be comfortable with and that they would be able to answer. And I think they did a really great job of being able to be transparent with the principals and just, you know, tell them about their experiences, so.
And then, my second question is, you talked about their perspective on what it means to be respected, and I thought it would be nice to hear some of their comments. Do you have any of those?
I do have them available. I don't have them with me right here, because I stuck to just themes, but I'd be willing to share some of those comments with you.
Okay. I mean, not just me. I would ask that you'd send them to the whole board. Sure thing.
Mr. Siegel?
Thank you. Will the selected students get that opportunity to engage with the teachers in a future session? And will the circle of students get bigger? Are you going to try and stick with a core group of students?
So, those students that did request to get in front of teachers, we will have an opportunity for them to talk to teachers again. And we'll also include more students, because like, as you can see in the demographics, there was just eight students there. Although, this year, we had student listening sessions with over 130 students this year as we went throughout the district. So, yes, they will get a chance to sit and be in front of teachers again and principals again. That is some of the work that Dr. Reed and myself, we're going to be working closely with principals to try and get those going. As far as the district circle equity team, yes. We are definitely talking about increasing the numbers of the student leadership on there. I'd like to see more high school student representation. A lot of the students that were on, that was part of that team last year, they're actually going to be freshmen in high school. So, we need to go back to the middle schools and do some more recruiting there too as well, so. And we also talked, and we'd like to see elementary represented as well.
Thank you. I did get to sit in on some of these listening sessions from the very beginning, and to have seen the numbers grow from those very earliest days was super encouraging. There ended up being a lot of voices that got to come forth and say some fairly brave things, and especially for these, you know, 11, 12, 13-year-old kids who were really being able to express themselves in ways that I certainly never could have at that age was really very impressive. So, this is cool. I'm glad to see this progress.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr.?
Rollins.
Rollins.
You know, you mentioned that all the kids have take, did all the kids in the district take the Panorama survey? It's what's, who all took the Panorama survey?
So, grades six through 12.
Six through 12?
Yes.
And do we get to see just the overall results from the survey? They do the gate report to us?
It's actually all students, grades K through 12. K through two is student, or, I'm sorry, teacher-reported, and then three through 12 is student-reported. And the student belonging indicator is on grades three through 12, with diversity inclusion added in six through 12. Yes, to answer your second question, we do have an overall district report of all of our student responses, and we also are able to see how we norm against similar districts.
Is that getting reported to the board at some point was really the question?
Certainly. We would like to add that as an action item perhaps and share that with you.
All right, thanks.
All right. Any final questions?
Yes, I have a question.
Oh, Ms. Pearson?
Thank you. Thank you, first of all, for the presentation. I'm interested in knowing the principals' response or reaction. Did they give any input from what the students shared?
Overall, their reaction was, it was really good to hear that from the students. There wasn't like a whole lot of real strong reactions, you know, either way, but I think for what they were saying is that they had the opportunity to hear those students like that and to hear what they had to say around student belonging was good for them, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. I hope I'm not missing any more lights. Okay. Thank you again, Ms. Hughes, for your presentation.
Thank you.
All right. So, next, we're going to segue into our celebrating RPS 205 section. And first off, we would like to highlight the Cherry Valley Summer Camp. RPS students attending from Sea to Shining Sea Summer Camp at Cherry Valley Elementary School are having a great time integrating the arts with learning. As you can see in these pictures here, you see the campers that are working with paint, clay, green screens, stop-motion animation, robots, and a lot more. They're making a lot of masterpieces here. And some additional schools that have also been hosting academic summer camps would be Nashville, Constance Lane, Ellis, and Auburn. Then next up, we have our RPS 205 Golf Scramble. This is an annual RPS 205 event that is held. It was held, sorry, on Friday, July 22nd. It was at Aldine Golf Course. And we had a great participation this year with 115 golfers and 15 volunteers. And we would like to thank everyone who helped make this event be fun and successful. Next up, we have our 205 Vibe, where this week, our top item was RPS 205. Teachers agreed to a four-year contract. And we want to make sure that everyone reads about our bus driver, Andrew Crow, who's also featured in our blog post, "RPS 205 Driver." He was named Rookie of the Year in Bus Safety Competition. Let's please congratulate Andrew for this great accomplishment. All right. Next up, we have legislative news. And we would like to get input from the board right now in terms of the legislative hot topics that we would like to be watching for and reporting in this upcoming year. And also, we wanted to take this opportunity to have a bigger conversation about how we can be prepared for the delegate assembly that's coming up here this upcoming fall. So, does anybody have any input on this section? We also want to be open to voting about more resolutions as well. Oh, yes, Ms. McCullough?
So, I sent you all the board members what the whole process is. I don't know if you all had a chance to check on that today, but based on what we received back as being the resolutions that will be voted on, it's up to board members to bring forward, I think, to the board, which ones they would like for us to have a conversation about and to have input on. I think, I mean, the choice will be yours as board members. I would hope, based on past resolutions and the numbers that there are, it wouldn't be all of them, but if it is all of them, that's what we'll do. But we'll have to talk about those in open session. Since this happens in November, and we always do our agendas a month ahead of time, I can put it on for the October session, the two meetings there to come to consensus, because we should have the resolutions in September. And then, for next year, obviously, the timeline, if you want the district to come forward with a resolution to be added, we have to start earlier. I think the deadline was April to get those in. And so, we missed that deadline, and, but certainly, we can have conversations and come to a consensus as board members on how we would like to be represented at the assembly. So, was it more about which resolutions that board members were concerned about, or who, or what was it that we were?
Well, at our committee meeting, we had just expressed that it would be beneficial for us to just have this bigger conversation, because last year, I was, I had the honor of being our delegate. And so, I remember where we talked about the different resolutions that pertain to our district, and we were all, we had met a consensus on those. But then, once I attended the assembly, there were many more that were on the docket. So, I didn't feel as prepared as I would like to be, because I didn't know where everybody weighed in on all of the other resolutions. So, I do think that it's important that we talk about the stuff that's going to impact us here. But then, also, when we do put this on the agenda in October, I think that's a good idea, and we can take a closer look at the other ones, so that way, we're all united for when the next delegate goes in November to vote. Ms. Pearson? Sorry, I'm still going to use this.
So, I think the greater concern is just simply voting for the resolutions that is presented. So, as a delegate, not being, that is something that we can decide, of course, prior to, but not being limited to, I think as a board, we should vote because we can on all of the resolutions. I think last year, it was explained that we selected some that our general public was concerned about. But, and as a state, as a whole, I think we should participate in voting for the whole of the resolutions. So, that's my point on the resolutions. And in terms of hot topics, and it looks like it's not a hot topic anymore, but it's still a concern of mine, how our non-tenure teachers are handled in terms of not being renewed. So, I don't know that it is completely necessary that it is set in stone through legislation, or if that is something that we can rethink as a district and how, what contributing factors that we would really consider and the professional development that we're willing to give our non-tenure teachers and to set them up for success. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pearson. Ms. McCullough?
Oh, I forgot to turn down.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Siegel?
Thank you. And as far as hot topics go, I think it would be good if we kind of kept our finger on the pulse of any legislation regarding school safety, not just because it happens to have been a pretty hot topic over the summer, but as it's going to dovetail with any facilities planning that we're doing, if we need to be prepared that way. I don't know if it'll even guide surveys that we do to gather information from stakeholders, but I think just keeping a really close eye and ear on what's happening with school safety from a legislative perspective would be a great idea.
Thank you, Mr. Siegel. I agree. For me, I think some hot topics that I want to pay close attention to are things in regard to like gun control and violence prevention, just considering some of the instances that have taken place over the past school year. So, I appreciate that you said that. Do any other board members want to weigh in on hot topics before we transition to the next portion? Okay. So, moving along, next up, we will now turn the floor over to Mr. Dodson, who will talk about meeting with various media outlets from this past month.
Hello, everyone. So, Dr. Jared and I have begun the process of re-engaging with some of our external partners. If you recall, as part of our charge of our committee, one of our objectives in Exhibit B is overseeing the development and implementation of strategies for Rockford Public Schools' image-building, marketing, and public relations efforts, and for maintaining close, positive relationships with key external stakeholders. So, we met with representatives from WIFR, WREX, and Midwest Family Broadcasting, and the Kathy Bear Everly joined us in that last meeting. And we did reach out. We had several attempts to meet with WTVO and the Rockford Register Star, but we were unsuccessful to schedule those meetings. Dr. Jared's why came from his personal observations on, he felt that a lot of our students don't have media literacy, don't know the difference between fact and opinion, don't know what a good credible news source is, and he feels that, he felt that things, these things aren't being taught in our schools with preciseness and fidelity. And so, his questions to the media representatives were around, would they like to partner with us to come into our schools and work with our students, whether that's in a classroom, whether that's in our academies, or focus groups in the classrooms? My kind of objective was around, because the media landscape has changed so drastically over the last five or 10 years, I kind of went to get a sense of some of the challenges that they were facing, how they felt that the media has changed over the last few years with, you know, with everything, with social media, with clickbait stories, people kind of listening to their own echo chambers, and not getting a balanced view of information. And we also, I also want to know what things were they interested in talking about or reporting about as it relates to Rockford Public Schools? And so, some of the common takeaways that we kind of got from all of our visits were that they are also kind of flummoxed, if you will, just about the changes in the media over the last few years, including just the short attention span of end-users. They also were concerned of just a lack of fact-checking of information. But the good news is that they were very interested in coming to our schools to help. They want to help teachers with media literacy. They're willing to have our students come and do media-related projects at their stations. They're very happy with our relationship with our communication staff, and they definitely want to be in the classroom with our students. And they're also interested in doing a variety of stories with us. And so, next steps, we're going to just follow up with our conversations and engage them in a way to kind of follow up on some of these objectives. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dodson.
I'm sorry. Can I ask a question? In your conversation with our media partners, did they feel like they had, would be able to help with un-flummoxing people? You know, and seriously, were they willing to be partners in this endeavor?
Absolutely. And they felt, again, they felt they're dealing with it as well, not just with students, but with the parents as well. And so, they think it's a great foray, if you will, to kind of start working with our students to kind of educate them on some of those media literacy topics.
And not to get into the weeds, but what does this look like? And is it going to be like field trips to the TV station? Are they going to come to the classrooms?
Potentially. That's what some of the discussions were around, so, absolutely. And they're very interested in doing that, so.
Cool.
We'll see where it goes from there.
Fun. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Dodson, will you elaborate a little more on balanced information? I think that's a good point to elaborate a little bit more on.
See, now you're trying to get me in trouble.
We're in this together.
Balanced information. So, I think that's around, again, around what is a credible news source? And when we say balanced information, sure, you're going to take different sides of a certain story, but it was around, how do you present both sides of an issue and let people make a reasonable kind of objective discernment for what actually is being said, right? What's, again, what's a fact, what's an opinion? But kind of understanding what both sides of an issue look like. Does that, does that help?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you again, Mr. Dodson. Lastly, we would like to give a community partnership update. There will be an upcoming back-to-school event that will be taking place Saturday, August 20th. It will be hosted by Auburn, Kennedy, and McIntosh. It will be, this will be their second annual back-to-school event for their families. Louis Lemon and Ellis' families are also invited, and it will take place at Auburn High School. We'll have food, info about RPS schools, and a kid zone with a lot of Um, we'll have food, info about RPS schools, in a kid's zone with a lot of activities for kids and families, and we will also have our very own event fleet that will also be on hand giving out, uh, backpacks. So with that being said, we hope that you guys remember to check out the board calendar on Board Docs for opportunities and events, and thank you so much for your time.
A awkward question. Do we, do we have a time on that event on the 20th?
We can, we can find out for you. We can get that to you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Reggie, Mr. Brooks.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. 12 to 3.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mohammed and Mr. Dodson, and also thank you, Ms. Hughes. Let's move on to Ms. Stanford's presentation for the performance and monitoring, monitoring portion of the committee meeting.
Thank you. Tonight, we have a series of board policies to review and a preview of the consent agenda. I'll read a brief dis, uh, description of each policy and then we'll take questions at the end. Policy 5.185, General Personnel Family and Medical Leave. The policy is revised to require an employee be employed by the district for at least 1,000 hours of service during the 12-month period immediately before beginning family and medical leave. Previously, the Illinois School Code required 1,250 hours of service to be eligible for the leave. A July 1, 2010 date implementing revisions is removed. Policy 5.210, Professional Personnel Resignations. The policy is revised to clarify that all teachers are prohibited from resigning during the school term in order to accept, accept another teaching position without the consent of the board. Policy 5.220, Professional Personnel Substitute Teachers. Revisions reflect statutory changes to the number of days TRS, annuitants and other licensed substitutes may teach. Policy 5.285, Educational Support Personnel Drug and Alcohol Testing for School Bus and Commercial Vehicle Drivers. The current policy mandates that federal law must be followed when testing school bus drivers and commercial vehicle drivers. The policy is revised to specify that state law must also be followed. Policy 5.290, Educational Support Personnel Employment, Termination and Suspensions. The list of bargaining groups is updated to include all groups. In addition, the wording related to layoffs has been modified. Policy 5.300, Educational Support Personnel Schedules and Employment Year. The list of bargaining groups is updated to include all groups. Policy 6.210, Instruction and Instructional Materials. The proposed revisions remove the reference to instructional television and instead detail that instructional materials should include electronic materials along with textbooks, workbooks and audiovisual materials. Policy 6.235, Instruction Access to Electronic Networks. The term electronic network is clarified to include all of the district's technology resources, including but not limited to the district's local area and wide area networks, including wireless networks, Wi-Fi, district-issued Wi-Fi hotspots, and any district servers or other networking infrastructure, access to the Internet or other online resources via, via the district's networks, or to any district-issued online account from any computer or device regardless of location, and district-owned or district-issued computers, laptops, tablets, phones or similar devices. And the last one is Policy 6.280, Instruction, Grading and Promotion. The reference to the Illinois Partnership for Assessment of Readiness for College and Careers or PARC test is removed because PARC is no longer used. Rather than requiring a specific test, the policy is updated to require student performance to be assessed by standardized tests required by ISBE. Are there any questions or observations on any of the policy changes? Mr. Rollins?
Um, on 5.210, this is really a question for Ms. Goldsmith. So we say in our policy that teachers can't resign during the year to go teach someplace else. What if they do? I mean, what, what's our, what's our recourse if they do and they violate our policy?
So the recourse is to... Thank you. The recourse is to submit to the state superintendent, uh, file that includes, uh, the information that we have to support the fact that they are in fact leaving us to serve another district. The state procedure is then to have a hearing or reach agreement with that teacher as to what, um, any license suspension might look like. Typically, under the statute, it says their license can be suspended for up to a year, but it has been the district's experience. They, they usually reach agreement as to the duration of suspension of the licensure, and that suspension typically occurs during some break period.
So, so this isn't just a violation of our policy, it's also a violation of the school code?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. Um, and then I just, I noticed one typo in 5.500. It's in one of the headings on the 12-month employee.
12-Monti.
It says 12-Monti.
Okay.
It's in...
6F.
Yeah. 5.0, it's 300, I can't read my own handwriting.
Is there any other questions?
Yes, please.
Mr. Siegel?
Sorry. Um, as far as 6B that Mr. Rollins just spoke about, is this language in the teacher contract?
It's actually in the school code, and it's almost verbatim as to what you see there in the policy, the portion... I'm sorry, hold on. The portion that, at the beginning of the policy where it says tenured teachers may resign, those first two sentences are almost verbatim to match the school code at 524-14. So it's not just our, in, in a collective bargaining agreement, it's in the law, in the school code.
Okay. So it's just reassuring to see something like that in the contract, and, and how often does something like this come up, and do we have many of these instances?
I, it's my recollection that I think over the past maybe five years, we may have submitted possibly anywhere from four to six teachers to the state. There is a, a state, uh, on the ISBE website, they list the teachers who, whose licenses have been suspended. No former RPS teacher is listed there, but we are aware of the kind of agreements that have taken place between some of those teachers. And so far, what I found were those very brief, like two-week agreement with the state superintendent, and the two weeks might occur during a, a holiday break or summer break, something like that. So now RPS teachers are listed on that website.
Thank you.
Ms. McCulloch?
Yes, Ms. Goldsmith and I had a back-and-forth email today on this subject, and, um, it appears there's just really no teeth in this. Um, it, one of the things that I was told is if they've already started teaching in another district, they're not going to pull them from that district. Um, another thing was it's our responsibility to send it down with the fact that they've gone to another district. I can't imagine they always tell us that when they resign. But she did offer to look up some of the previous, um, teachers who have resigned and moved on and, um, and, and share that with the board in terms of what the determination was. Obviously, it was not a, um, pulling a license for a year. And with the teacher shortage, I just see that the state not, you know, doing a lot of follow-through, and there is a history of not doing it up until this point anyways. So I'm not... And if they go to another, is this just within state? I forgot to ask you that one, because if they go to another state to teach, it's only, or if they go 100 miles away, I don't expect, you know, their, their, their job, um, their, maybe their spouse's job changed or whatever, and they have to move, we can't expect that they can't teach in another district in Illinois. So there's so many confounding factors.
You are exactly right. There's a hearing process and then a process by which they can reach agreement. Um, and I did begin the, the research that Ms. McCulloch is referencing, it is incomplete. So some of the information I'm sharing tonight will be compiled for the board and shared. Thank you.
I had a question on another policy, and that is, um, 6I, which is Instruction, Grading and Promotion. I find it interesting that we actually have a policy that says we don't do social promotion. Um, a student shall not be promoted based on age or any other social reason not related to academic performance. Uh, the decision to promote a student to the next grade level shall be based on successful completion of the curriculum attendance, performance-based, on the standardized test required by the Illinois State Board of Education. This is another one that has no meat because we don't follow it. Uh, we are not holding students back when they don't meet or exceed on our standardized tests. We don't hold students back if they haven't attended. We don't hold students back. So I, it just, it's pretty glaring that we're going to approve something and that we're really just updating it, um, because we don't have a PARC anymore. But is there any thought that we're actually going to be following our policy as the, as time goes on? And what are we going to be doing to, to, different so that we are? Because can we really afford to hold back that many students?
Um, I'm pretty certain, um, that we would want to have probably a more wholesome discussion about this, not just on our, um, board policy update night. So I think I'd like to add this as an action item, if that's okay, to come back with a time and place to discuss what we'd like to do moving forward.
So then is it a policy we want to approve if we haven't had that conversation? Or should we put that on hold until that conversation occurs?
I think if there's any doubt, caution or reservation in regards to any policy, that we should not vote on it, um, but rather obtain more information and whether it is actually applicable or not.
So we can pull that until, from the, from the next meeting? Which would, is that the ninth? I believe.
Mm-hmm. Any other comments, questions?
Well, yeah, and...
Go ahead.
It sounded like there was an invitation to begin that conversation. Does, is there any merit to doing a gut check on this before we hear, uh, anything from the administration? I mean, if...
Why not?
At some point, a board went to the effort to put this into policy, there, I'm assuming with some sort of a reason, and that it survived, um, since 1997, um, that...
I think it's required by the school code, isn't it?
I was going to make two recommendations. The first, I was going to ask that you allow me to follow up because I do believe that social promotion language is in the school code, but I need to verify it. And secondly, I was going to suggest that you may want to proceed with the proposed change and then put the, uh, policy back on a different agenda for further discussion on the social promotion. Because the PARC test is outdated, it does not exist, and that change is still necessary. So we don't want to have the outdated, uh, information that is clearly not relevant still present there, but we could still continue on if necessary, uh, on the social promotion issue after I check whether it is, uh, statutory language.
I think we should just do the whole thing at once, Ms. Goldsmith.
Okay.
Instead of bringing it back twice.
Okay, so I would just ask that...
Guarantee that we will have that conversation.
Okay, so I would just ask that at this time that it not be pulled, if you could give me just a little bit to confirm the language?
No, I'd like it pulled.
Okay, even with the PARC language still present? All right.
When we, when we vote on a final policy form, if this is what it's, it will have that PARC language, and it will be before the end of the year.
Okay.
I sure hope. And that is when we need the PARC language in there, right? So...
I have a question. How would this affect us legally if we don't accept your recommendation?
Um, I don't think that there would be any, uh, significant legal risk because the district is proceeding with the appropriate testing. Um, I was just making a recommendation for efficiencies purpose, and so that if we were to be, for example, audited by anyone, we would not have, uh, inaccurate language in the policy at the time. But I think I can do the follow-up quickly enough that the movement of the board would not be delayed. Thank you.
When, when's the last time we took a PARC test?
2017, I believe.
And this policy has not been changed since 2016, so we've been operating under this policy up till now, um, and nobody's coming after us, so we'll get it right before the end of the year.
Any other comments? We will move on to our consent agenda. Uh, under number seven, I, items A through G are our standard agenda items, so I will begin with, uh, item H. Addendum to consolidated contracts for Dreambox. Dreambox is an approved and aligned supplemental resource to support math instruction. This contract provides more than 5,000 licenses and one paid webinar per school for Eisenhower, Flynn, Risa, Brookview, Lathrop, McIntosh, Whitehead, Froberg, Constant Slane, Westview, Barber and Washington. Item I, EPA 2022 Clean School Bus Rebate Program. The administration recommends the Board of Education approve the district to apply for the federal EPA grant for the purchase of up to 10 electric school buses. Adding electric school buses to the district fleet will reduce fuel emissions within the city and at our schools will help, will help create a better environment for our students and community. Item J is Frontline Technologies. The district has negotiated a two-year agreement with Frontline Technologies for the absence management and Aplictract system whereby the annual increase for fiscal year '23 and '24 will be set at 5%. Item K, Houghton Mifflin Harcourt. Our Read 180 and System 44 courses utilize a literacy intervention program from Houghton Mifflin Harcourt, which provides a personalized blended learning experience for students reading below grade level. We offer training and instructional support to those teachers every year. Item L, E911 software. In order to stay compliant with all relevant E911 safety regulations, we are seeking the usage of Red Sky software. This software will assist in the maintenance, maintenance of 911 location information and help us maintain a much more accurate E911 ecosystem. Ray Baum's law specifically states that a dispatchable location be shared with all 911 calls. With so many rooms in the district, assistance is needed to maintain compliance. Item M is GoGuardian Beacon Core. The current version of GoGuardian, the district's well-filtering online safety monitoring and classroom management software, gathers data on student browsing behavior and alerts administration and building leadership about searches categorized as self-harm. However, the current feature lacks robust dashboards, trends and reporting functionality that would greatly assist with the social emotional support work of the district. GoGuardian has developed a new enhanced feature called Beacon to address the need. GoGuardian designed the product with direct guidance from American Association of Suicidology and American Foundation for Suicide Prevention. Beacon provides robust drill-down... and American Foundation for Suicide Prevention. Beacon provides robust, drilled-down dashboards and reports that will support the social and emotional support work of the district. Item N, Youth Services Network Amendment. This amendment to the YSN contract will allow Constance Lane and Ellis to add one trauma therapist each. Are there any comments or questions about the consent items?
Ms. McCulloch? I see Mr. Slife is here. The Clean School Bus Rebate Program, I figured that's why you're here. Anyways, I mean, the idea of electric bus sounds great. I'm just wondering what the history is like of, with school districts using those, and what, what do we, what do we end up with maintenance? Because maintenance tends to be higher on electric vehicles. How, how does that?
Yes.
I remember when, was it propane? That was the latest and greatest, and we were going to have all these propane buses, and then all we could think of was we needed to get rid of them. So...
All right. So the electric school bus has been around a lot longer than I want to admit, at least 10 years for the ones that we were looking at. The three major manufacturers of school buses in the last three, four years have gotten into it, but there have been a couple that have been doing it for quite a while now. They have data and proof that the actual maintenance costs of the vehicle, because it doesn't have oil changes and, and stuff like that, is less expensive. We're still too early to find out when those batteries die, how much it is to either replace them or go a different direction. On the propane, I'm ready now to move forward to get more, because we're getting it done and we're getting it, getting it ready. But the, the electric, this grant, I see the push from our government coming through on this, and this would allow us to get some. We put in for 10, we might get one or two. We don't have to accept it if we're uncomfortable with it. The infrastructure and the bus, because they are a lot more expensive, would be paid for, otherwise I would not be bringing that forward.
Did you say you already applied?
I, we have applied.
Because it says asking us to approve applying.
Yes. So the application date comes and is due the 19th, so that we had everything in line, went ahead and submitted the application. We had help from Lion School Bus Company to do that, and then with the understanding that if we said no here, that we do not have to accept a grant at all.
And it, does it include the charging stations or not?
Yes, it will. It includes that infrastructure.
I have one more question, and it was on the E911 software. But if anybody else has a bus question while he's standing at the podium.
Mr. Rollins?
Yeah, well, I had some of the, well, really the same concerns as Ms. McCulloch, because we were both on the board, and we got the propane buses. And the issue, my recollection is the issue was that, you know, we maintain our own buses, but there was nobody on our staff who really was trained to maintain the propane buses, and there was nobody regionally who was trained to maintain the propane buses, and so we had a lot of problems with them.
Right.
I don't want to repeat history here.
Yeah, neither do I.
And, and I'm a little concerned that now we're going to be running three different kinds of buses. We're going to have diesel buses, or gasoline, or whatever they are. And we've got propane, which we've now learned how to maintain, and which are now more or less problem-free, and now we're going to be throwing electric buses into the mix. And so that's really my primary concern, is do we know that we have people who are going to be able to work on these buses if we get them? Was there an opportunity to apply for more propane buses as part of this, or are they not considered clean fuel vehicles?
They are clean fuel vehicles, not in this, this grant, but there are opportunities with the Illinois state grants and stuff that we can apply for more propane.
Well, back to my initial question. Do, are we convinced that we are going to have people who can work on these buses if we get them?
So for the majority of the things that are going to go wrong, not yet. I'll, I'll say that out, out right now, because we don't know what those are going to be. I have been told from the people that are running these buses, through Lion Electric anyway, that they log into their computer, they solve it from the shop. If they need to, they come out to your facility. But a lot of times, if it's plugged in and you're, they can log in and do a diagnostic and tell you what's wrong. The normal things that go, like tires and all that, will be the same, but the actual electronics, they can do right from the corporation.
And then since this is a small number of buses, if we get a small number of buses, do we have enough in our reserve fleet that if something goes wrong, we'll just be able to cover it?
Absolutely.
All right.
Yep.
And there's availability of these buses out there? I mean, vehicles in general aren't real available right now.
They opened, Lion Bus opened a new facility in Juliet, 900,000 square foot manufacturing space. They are supposed to be rolling school buses and light-duty trucks off it at the end of the third quarter here. So lead time on an electric bus, I think, is eight months, from what I was told.
How does that compare? I'm sorry, I don't know.
On a diesel bus right now, it is 12. On a propane, it's three.
Thank you. My question on E911 software, is that yours, mister? Okay, so assists in the, it helps us maintain a much more accurate E911 ecosystem.
Excuse me, Jude.
Oh.
There was another question on the scene.
On the bus?
Regarding the bus.
Yeah, it, it can wait.
I apologize. No, go ahead.
It was way nerdy.
David, I can't see your light because your water's in the way. Sorry, I'm sorry.
It's true. I didn't see his light either. That's why.
That's my fault. I didn't see it. I'm sorry about that.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
So let's say we get 10 buses. I'm assuming that our infrastructure, our charging stations will be set up at the bus barn, right?
That, that's the current plan, yeah.
And I don't know what range is like on buses. I imagine they have certain capacities, but also range challenges like other EVs have. Does that mean those routes end up sitting a little closer to the bus barn, or do they have enough range that they can go hither and yon and make it back to their charging station?
Their, their range is not fantastic. It's 125 miles between charges. That means it would be used in our downtown urban areas and those schools.
Mr. Segal, one of the purposes behind this EPA grant was to ensure that these vehicles were used in more of our urban settings, lowering the emissions within our cities and, and urban areas. So to Mr. Slife's point, the, we've got 125-mile range on these electric buses that we're currently looking at, and we would, we would primarily run those in, in the city areas.
Thank you.
I have a quick question. So it is my understanding that the grant, or the ability to apply for the grant, is up to five years. Is that accurate information?
That is correct. There's, there's five opening and closing periods through. The first one is now, it is for 500 million, and then it's supposed to be a billion for the following four years, if everything lines up.
Okay, so if we, so we've already applied for the grant. So if we're granted the grant, and we don't use it, will that interfere with us applying the next go-around? Is there any penalty at all for not accepting it if it's approved?
There is not, actually. We, once we're in, we can reapply easier, actually, for the other following four years. So, and there wouldn't be a penalty if we said no.
Thank you.
Any other bus questions?
Well, were you first? Well, Mr. Segal's question just actually, I didn't realize that the range was that short. We run these things in the winter, and so what's the range when you're running the heat on a, on an electric bus in the winter?
So their, their range data for the 125 miles, they consider, they run heat in the winter, and then they run air conditioners in the summer, which we won't. So their 125 should be what the winter condition will be.
With, with the heat?
We'll probably get more, yeah. We'll probably get more in the summertime, because we're not going to get them with air conditioning.
Okay.
What is our current range or mileage?
So... Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
For the schools that you all are looking at servicing?
So on, depending on how we route and put our, our schools together, we can go anywhere from 50 miles a day to closer to 250 miles a day. Our average route right now was 155 miles for considering all the buses in the whole district.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Is that for both times during the day?
Yeah, that's for the whole day.
So if it was 155, and it was half of that, you'd have time to charge in between morning and the afternoon?
Yes.
Thanks for all your work this year, making, making ends meet, so to speak. It's like magic, so. My other question, then, that was all the bus questions, okay, was what does an E911 ecosystem mean for this software?
So in short, with the E91 ecosystem, what that means is our local databases that we configure to be able to put location, dispatchable location information within our system, and also the 911 side with Winnebago County 911 and Rockford 911, making sure that matches. So that entire environment in general, and what this software allows us to do, which has been a manual process, really since 2018, when Carey's Law and Rebaum's Law went into effect on having this capability, it's been a manual process. This provides automated, automation and real-time updates to that process. When we make a change on our side, it's actively seen on the 911 side.
I'm sorry, I don't understand how that works. So, and, and technology is probably not my forte, but, so this software goes on what?
So this will be installed in our network, and what it does, it, it works in tandem with our current phone system, which is a multi-line phone system. We have about 9,000 phones in the district. And what it does is, is able to see, like, if a phone is plugged into room 110 at a building, and someone unplugs it and moves it to a different room, we're able to see that right away and be able to make that change in our system. So if I call 911 from a different room, it is already updated, and letting, and when someone calls 911, they know it's not in room 110 anymore, it's in 220. So if I call for an emergency, they know where to dispatch to.
Okay, so this is, it says software, but it's connected to the hard lines that we have in all the buildings.
It really is, yes.
Yeah. I can get that.
Thank you. Mr. Rollins?
Yeah, I had a question on the GoGuardian Beacon Core. I don't know who's got that one.
That'd be me also.
Okay, so it says that it notifies administration and building leaders, like specifically, who's going to get notified?
Currently, the way it's configured, it's principals and APs in buildings. We've used that structure for the current product we have, have had, and it's going to continue. And Ms. Deppman may be able to touch on what we're looking at in the future with that as well, with our additional social-emotional support there.
So we're considering creating a schedule of on-call with the 20 extra days that we have for our school psychologists, but this is something that needs to be negotiated. So we're working on that now for an after-hours situation. So we would have evenings and weekends covered. Right now, we have the after-hours kind of dialed back, and these alerts just come during the school day to principals and assistant principals.
Okay, thanks.
I have a question down here.
Sure.
Regarding the youth, the YSN amendment, Mr. Gallagher, is that you? Okay, so looking at the amendment, we're going to add two trauma therapists to Constance Lane and Ellis. Not questioning the need of, of having therapists there, but how do we identify those two schools to be a part of this amendment? And do we have any that are present at high schools as well? I looked at the original, one that we voted on, and I didn't see any high schools.
I would want to double-check with you with regards to the positions at the high schools. With this amendment here for Ellis and Constance Lane, pardon me, this is a school-based decision. These are discretionary positions. Each of these schools, it's a new principal who has come in at the beginning of the summer, and when they have a new principal come in, they have an opportunity to review their budget and reallocate their discretionary funds as they see fit to match their theory of action and the needs that they've identified in the building. And so that's why we have these amendments here. But I could certainly get back to you with regards to the inventory of the trauma therapist at the high school level.
Yeah, thank you. So just so I can make sure I'm understanding you correctly, so this was on, this is a principal decision on whether or not they feel the need is needed there at their school?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I also have a question.
Okay.
So we've partnered with YSN Youth Service Network for some time. Have we given any thought to, which helped target the suspension rate and, you know, redirecting behaviors, so all of the emotional, social-emotional support or peace? Have we given any thought or had any conversation with any other community partners, say for an example, Rockford Park District, that could partner with us as well, that can target some of the issues that are, that's identified with the reason we utilize YSN?
We have had several proposals come in through the Call to Action, and I'm not sure exactly which ones have moved forward and which ones have not. I think we have 16 that have, that have moved forward total. We have had some from the Park District. Some of them are focused around social-emotional supports. With regards to the Call to Action, we're really asking for time outside of the school day, so after school and during the summer as an extension of time, because that's really at what's, what's at the heart of the American Rescue Plan dollars, the ARP-ESR dollars. And so those that are coming in and funded by ARP-ESR, the focus there is on after-school and during the summer. This discretionary personnel with YSN, that all happens during the school day.
So there's no room during the day for additional partners to participate? It's strictly for, are, are you saying that that is what is specifically allotted for, or that's what we're choosing to utilize it for?
The heart of ARP-ESR is extended time, either after the school day has ended or after the school year has ended. That's sort of the heart of it. But we have had some proposals that have come through that have added additional support during the school day. So I think we have some coming through for like mentoring services, for example, that happen during a lunch hour. So that's additional time that students are given during the school day. So we have had some proposals come through on that. What we do is, when proposals come through, we score them on a rubric, and then we look at their viability for funding, and then they get coaching support either from the district or from our partners at Wabongo or Alim at Rockford, to make sure that they are a viable proposal, can be fully funded, and meet the criteria of the grant.
Okay, so when you use the word "the heart of the, of ARP-ESR," I'm, I'm really trying to make sure that the public understand, is there any room, or are, is it solely for that?
So there are very specific criteria that are laid out on the state website, and we also have those materials linked into our Call to Action Proposal Toolkit. And it gives you specifically the language from the state about what's allowable and what's not allowable from a funding perspective. And our job is to kind of tee up those proposals that we believe will be allowable. They come to the board, they also have to be approved by ISB. So there's two levels of approval that are required here.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Anyone else have any more questions? That will conclude my report. I'm sorry. We did need to go back to Ms. Goldsmith. She has reviewed the policy that was in question.
Yes, I just wanted, for the sake of the board's efficiency, I wanted to just confirm that I did look at the school code at section 10-20.9A, and there is an explicit prohibition. School districts shall not promote students to the next higher grade level based upon age or any other social reasons not related to academic performance. That statutory language is mirrored in the policy, and it has been the district's practice where there's an explicit prohibition, that we do capture that in the policy.
I, I just want clarity.
Oh, no, I was moving on to the next section. You go ahead.
So are we saying that, did I understand you correctly, Jude, in saying that we don't practice this policy, or there's, can I get some... Or, there's, can I get some?
I would, I would let Ms. Detman talk about how well we adhere to this policy.
I'll continue reading the school code, but then I think we should read this and then as an action item, come back with a more fulsome report to make sure we're fully prepared. Ms. Goldsmith read the first two sentences. After that, it says, "Students determined by the local district to not qualify for promotion to the next higher grade shall be provided remedial assistance, which may include, but shall not be limited to, a summer bridge program of no less than 90 hours, tutorial sessions, increased or concentrated instructional time, modifications to instructional materials, and retention in grade." So there's some nuance here in this code language that we should probably discuss and provide more time to do so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we still want to have that pulled. Is that the consensus? Okay. All right, that's the end of your report?
Yes.
All right, thank you. So I'm going to hand the floor to Mr. Rollins, who will lead the Planning and Development Committee portion of the meeting.
Thank you. The first item under my report is the Resolution to Adopt the 2022-2023 Budget. That's the budget year that we are currently in. Tonight is the first read of the Resolution to Adopt the 2022-2023 Budget. The public hearing, which we're required by statute to have, will be on August 23, 2022, and it will be brought to the board for approval on September 13, 2022. Are there any questions or discussions on the fiscal year '23 preliminary budget? Hearing none. We'll move on to item 8B, Resolution Authorizing and Directing Preparation of the Tentative 2023-2024 Budget. So that is for the next fiscal year. Next, we have the Resolution Authorizing and Directing the Preparation of the Tentative 2023-2024 Budget. Cabinet will present their individual budgets throughout the budget cycle as indicated in the attached Fiscal Year '24 Budget Development Planning Calendar. Are there any questions or discussions on the Resolution Authorizing and Directing Preparation of the Tentative 2023-2024 Budget? This will be brought to the board for approval at the September 13, 2022 board meeting. That's just the resolution to start the work. The next item is 8C, the Facilities Master Plan Update. Our next item is the Facilities Master Plan Update. I will now turn the meeting over to Michael Phillips, Chief Operating Officer, to present the, sorry, Facilities Master Plan.
Good evening. In February, we had an initial conversation focused around a new Facilities Master Plan. We put that on pause as we were finalizing our system-wide framework and our strategic plan. And as we worked through our ESR projects, we, we wanted to come back to this conversation to revisit some of the topics we had discussed in February and, and bring forward some new topics that have, have come up since that time. First, we wanted to give some updates on the ESR 2 and ARP-ESR projects. I know we were just here in July giving our mandatory update for ISB, but there's been some new developments that I wanted to share with the board. First, our Phase 1 projects that were polled, which were, was Bloom, Spring Creek, Lathrop, and Guilford, have been redesigned and are now out for bid. We had a pre-bid meeting last Tuesday. We had multiple general contractors. We had multiple HVAC contractors attend that pre-bid. So we're, we're very optimistic that we're going to see more people at the table bringing this to bid in the fall for next summer's construction season. The other development centers around the spending timeline of our ARP-ESR dollars. Mr. Brown, as well as Dr. Jarrett, have had conversations with lobbyists, and we've received word last week that the Department of Ed, the Federal Department of Education is considering extending our spending timeline to 2026, which would be very advantageous for us. We still would have to have our projects committed by September 30 of 2024, but it allows for us to extend those projects out and, and spend that money until 2026. The, the update we received from our lobbyist is they're expecting an announcement within the next two to three weeks from the Department of Education. So, you know, we, we are very, we are looking forward to hearing that extension. If, if that happens, we will definitely pull back on how we bid our Phase 2 and Phase 3 projects. We will still move forward with four schools if the extension happened, but we would push the remaining schools of Phase 2 and Phase 3 back to bid the following year in hopes that we start seeing some more, our supply cha, ease of our supply chain issues as well as inflationary issues that we're, that we're encountering right now. So some of the topics we discussed back in February included the expansion of special programming to our middle schools and high schools, adding support services space at some of our school locations, because as we've added positions, we've outgrown buildings, and in some cases, we've used classrooms for some of this support services space, whether that's MTSS tutoring. So we really need to, to look at that as we move forward. Also, our temporary buildings around the district, that they are supposed to be temporary and, and really only used for five years, but we do have a number of buildings, temporary buildings across the district that we, we should consider. And lastly, we've had a conversation about how to proceed with the Roosevelt Community Education Center. When we completed our facilities condition assessment here a few years ago, we identified that the replacement value of that building was $57.3 million, but our facilities condition index needs within five years, as well as our requirement index needs within 15 to 20 years exceeded that replacement cost. And we're looking at a total needs of $75.9 million at Roosevelt. One of the other challenges at Roosevelt is some of the programs we have there, the space just does not really fit that, that model of classroom building. So, you know, so things we, we should continue to consider. Wanted to provide an update on where, where we're currently sitting with our decennial life safety and our facilities condition assessment projects. The one thing I would note is the schools with asterisks denote decennial life safety projects. So we are working through roof replacements at East. We've just completed Fairview. We have a roof replacement going on at Lincoln and at Westview. Spring Creek is an exterior door and masonry replacement. Also this summer, we've been working on parking lot and hard surface playground replacements. We replaced the kindergarten playground at Bloom. We just finished up the student parking lot at East High School, working on some parking, staff parking, and a circular drive at Kennedy. And we're also working on a hard surface playground and parking, bus parking area at Marshall Elementary School, as well as staff parking and bus parking at RISA. Projects that we're looking at bringing back, that have been designed or will be in design that we are preparing for bid include roof projects at Barber, Ellis, Kennedy, and rebidding the roof at West. We, our plan is to bid those yet this late fall, early winter, and bring those forwards for work next summer, the summer of 2024. We're also looking at doing some parking lot work at Barber, Jefferson, Johnson, and Kennedy. Some other topics to consider is centered around security. As, as you may remember, we are working with True North on a security audit. Currently, internally, we're working on a pre-assessment spreadsheet, basically providing a, a number of different information and data points to True North before they come onsite in the fall for their onsite assessment. One of the things we did ask True North to look at when they were onsite is our pod-style classrooms at Byer, Carlson, Gregory, and Marshall Elementary School on what, how, how could we go about securing these pods? One of the challenges with the pod classrooms, they are smaller footprint than a typical classroom. So to add a door at each classroom may not be feasible. So looking at how we could secure the pod as a whole versus individual classrooms and still attain security. The other thing I, I just wanted to revisit were the security vestibules that we're currently working on this summer at Byer, Carlson, Fairview, and Rolling Green, and vestibules that are planned for next summer at Ellis, Lewis, Lemon, Marshall, and RISA. Those will be going out to bid late fall, early winter for, for next summer work. But we have nine other remaining schools that require secure vestibules. And what we'd like to do is design those, put those out to bid, and move those up to the summer of 2023 so we can finalize that work. That's been ongoing work over the last few years, and with everything going on, we'd like to, we'd try to, we'd like to try to get that accomplished all next summer. From an athletic standpoint, if you remember last year, we did some work at Jefferson by re-grading the practice football field as well as moving away from a cinder track to an asphalt track. We have that same condition at East where there's a grass football field and a cinder track. We had talked about basically duplicating a similar situation at East like we currently have at Jefferson. But as we've looked further, we, we've kind of talked about the idea of adding turf fields and then rubberized tracks. We don't want to recreate stadiums at the other two high school locations, but we do want to consider providing equitable athletic facilities for our other high schools for practice situations, as well as it gives our junior varsity programs, who don't typically play at our stadiums, a better field or track to hold their JV games or, and/or freshman games. The, and, and so we have, we have some initial estimates. We worked with Fairgram, our civil engineer that we've worked with on several other projects. So we're looking at $2.8 million at East and $2.2 million at Jefferson to, to create those turf fields and rubberized track. At Jefferson, we're basically just adding the rubber surface to the asphalt track that we installed last, last summer. So that's why the costs look a little different. Also, over this past year, we've been dealing with pool issues at Marshall Middle School. So we've been working with our engineers as well as a pool consultant. We were losing water consistently day after day. So we tried to make some initial repairs to the pool basin, and we were unsuccessful in stopping that leak. So we got back together with our architects and engineers and pool consultant to really take a look at what needed to be done. One of the things we did to really further investigate was doing some ground penetrating radar to really look at the condition underneath the pool basin. And what we found is voids underneath the pool basin and in some areas underneath the, the deck of the pool. So basically, we're looking at a full pool replacement at Marshall Middle School at an estimated cost of $2 million. If you recall, back in fiscal year '20, we provided kind of a pool analysis of what it cost us annually to maintain our pools at, at 11 facilities. And that is approximately $284,000 annually that we spend on maintaining, maintaining our pools, whether that's adding chlorine, water, heating the pools, heating the space, as well as just the general pool maintenance that goes on. If we look at just our middle schools, we spend approximately $135,000 a year with our pool maintenance. So one of the things we wanted to propose to the board to consider is, as our middle school pools reach the end of their life cycles, should we possibly look at repurposing that space for other needs within, within the school? It could be science labs, things of that nature. But there is a true cost to maintaining these pools, and maybe the space could be better utilized. I've had some initial conversations with Principal Powell at Marshall Middle School, and while obviously she'd be disappointed in not having a pool, she understands and can see benefits where that money could be spent in other places at the school. I did want to share that West Middle School and Marshall, their teams are combined. There's typically between 45 and 50 students from Marshall Middle School that are part of that swim team and five to 10 from West. This last year, they used West's pool for their practices and, and their meets, and that seemed to work very well. Marshall Middle School, as you know, is probably two, two and a half miles north of Rockton, on Rockton Road from West. So it is generally, it's generally close. I would also like to say that Marshall Middle School does use that pool or has used that pool in the past for PE activities, but it's not something they necessarily need, according to Jessica, for that. They have plenty of gym space and some other space within the building for weights and, and different activities when it, when it comes to PE. So just something as we move forward to consider with the, the large maintenance costs that we have annually. The other thing, fine arcs. Some of the things we've talked about needs there are middle school auditoriums need improvements. Really, across the district, we do have accessibility issues at the majority of our auditoriums. Lighting, seating needs to be replaced. Our high school theater program space needs to be looked at. There's, there should be consideration for additional storage as well as prop building space. They, they are really at their busting points for the space that they have to, to run their program. And lastly, soundproof practice rooms for our music, music departments. Recently, we were alerted to the Capital Development Board making $100 million available to public school operators of early childhood centers, $60 million, which could be awarded yet this fall. So we just wanted to bring this forward now to the board. This is a grant that we are looking at. The funds are available to construct, renovate, or otherwise improve facilities. We would be looking at applying for a grant to actually construct a new facility. One of the areas that we've looked at is the Sommerdale location. The way that building is currently situated on the property, we would have to look at working with Mercy to the north of us that has a lot of available parking lot that isn't being used as a possibility of accessing some additional property to, to, to construct a building. So we could receive up to, if applied, we could receive up to $10 million, and there is a matching funds of three, three to 10% based on our ISB tier level. And that's the presentation for this evening. I'll take any questions.
Mr. Segal?
Thank you. When would we be making a decision on things like the turf and track at East and Jefferson?
So I, I think we wanted to have some initial thoughts or consideration from the board, you know, what, what people thought about that? Is it something that you see value of bringing forward to a board meeting to, to, to vote on, to move forward with design and, and bidding of such a project?
I guess since my light is on and I started speaking, I guess I would kind of think this is not a, as necessary of a spend as some of the others that we've discussed tonight, and also understanding that there's probably going to be some significantly elevated expense just due to economic conditions of, you know, construction. just due to economic conditions of, you know, construction, that this possibly might be something that could be set aside a bit.
Sure.
And see if this can be more advantageously done. And $5 million for a pair of tracks is a significant spend. And I appreciate the extra context that you gave on the swimming pools. It, because it looked really funny on that slide that said, "Pool replacement at Marshall, $2 million." And then the next line is, "Repurpose middle school's pool space at end of lifecycle." It kind of sounds like you're telling us that that Marshall pool is at the end of its life, and our options are repurpose it or spend $2 million. And with all due respect to our, our swimming community, I would rather, as you suggested, put that money into science labs. And I think we could do a lot of state-of-the-art stuff with a couple million dollars.
Mr. Siegel, to your, to your point, not only is the pool basin leaking and, and would need to be replaced, once you get past a certain dollar threshold, the Illinois Department of Health comes into play also and starts looking at other things, so, which requires locker room improvements. And I just want to indicate that the pool equipment also is, is past its life. So it's the entire infrastructure and basin of the pool that would need to be replaced. And that is all included within that estimate that was provided.
Ms. Stanford, I think you were next.
Going back to the tracks and the, and the turf fields, I kind of disagree with, with, what David said about this, because we've been talking about how our students feel connected to their school. And we have two high schools that have to play a lot of their extracurriculars at a different school. Can you tell me this, the, the projected cost for the turf fields and the track, what, what would be the additional cost to provide seating so that they could play their games there?
Ms. Stanford, I'd have to review that with, with our engineers and architects. That, we didn't approach it from that manner, so I'd have to take a look at what those costs would be.
Sure. Yeah, right. Just, just curious.
Yeah. I think, you know, and I appreciate the question. I think our intent was definitely to provide equitable practice facilities. So when they, when they do go to the stadiums to play their games, that, you know, they've practiced on the same type of field. But we do, as I mentioned, our junior varsity and our freshman teams are playing on, you know, grass fields that aren't, aren't very good. And whether running on a cinder track or an asphalt track. So it would provide opportunities for that group to hold, you know, to hold their games. But I will definitely look into additional costs.
Thank you.
Mr. Connor?
Yeah. What process are we using to engage the athletic and extracurricular departments to essentially assess and go out to the principals and teachers and the parents, for that matter, to come back? So rather than we just look at this as a facilities issue, that we look at this as an educational issue, I, one thing I'll say out loud is that we, as a board, no offense to us, but we're not particularly, I think, equipped to judge the kinds of activities that, that families and students are looking for and what the principals see. And what I'll say is that we've had some questions about swimming in the past, and it's, it is expensive, and I'm not denying that. But I'd like to understand the impact of it. And even when it comes to the, if you will, repairs, for lack of a better term, or improvements for the schools, and understanding how that fits. But I think having what the athletic department and extracurricular folks are thinking about, number one, because I think that's important, that, that there be some statement going forward on what that is. And I think the second part, again, is to make sure that the principals and the families that are in that area really do look at what they want to be engaged in. The other part I'll say is, I don't know well enough what some of our community partners are thinking about. And I understand that we've got substantial investments in pools, in particular at the middle school level. There's just no doubt about it. I know that they're used a fair amount. And obviously, I'd like to see more science labs myself and all that. So it's not that, that's not tempting. But I'd really hate to commit us to a long-term vision and not get that perspective on the education side. So whatever comes back, I know for myself, I would appreciate it if it were on the heading of what we want to do educationally to improve the district, and not just as facilities. We have an opportunity in terms of the spending of the RPS, or without a doubt, and I hope they do extend it, because that has put a lot of undue pressure, frankly, for no reason. But I, having that plan and that vision, I think, is, is important.
Yeah. So, Mr. Connor, to your point, as I stated earlier, we kind of hit the pause button on the facilities master plan as we were working through our ESSR and strategic plan. But I, I think we have a good foundation of how to proceed, proceed, looking back at our last facilities master plan. So I, I would suggest that we, we need to pull together a facilities task force, much like we had in our last facilities master plan, to really start looking at these issues. And to your point, getting out to our educators as, as well as our fine arts folks and, and athletics folks to, to really, you know, look at, at, the, obviously, I provided some needs, but there are a lot more needs out there. But bringing and collaborating with a larger group of people.
The thing, one comment I'll have is that it sounds like a job for having some vision and strategy on this, that if we have sort of an operational opportunity in the funding side, sometimes that does spur some of the vision parts. And I truly don't know what all the trends are. So I think having, having that and having athletics and extracurriculars really strongly involved in this to help with both the feedback and that vision, I think, would be helpful. And I'd like to hear from all the areas on the education side, curriculum, the leadership in the schools, all that.
I should also mention, some of these things were brought forward tonight, because we, we have seen additional CPPRT money that we were not expecting. And so bringing forward the secure, the remaining secure vestibules, bringing forward this discussion of the field turf and rubberized track somewhat was driven by these additional funds that, that we did receive that, that we weren't expecting. So.
I totally understand the opportunistic side. It's just, as you well point out, I think having the context for what we're spending on. And one of the things I will say is, the facilities plan really did try to set up a vision to entice families why RPS would be first choice. And so the more we can add on to that and strengthen that vision, I think, the better, especially since we do have some, some funding opportunities here.
Thank you.
I have a question. It was similar to Mr. Connor. I was just trying to get clarity on, do we know if, when it comes to physical education curriculum, if it's mandatory to have swimming on a middle school level? Because I know, as of right now, that's something that's incorporated, but.
It's, it's not mandatory.
So just something that they were just making use of the space and making that a part of?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. So if I use Lincoln as an example, kind of a city school that does not have a lot of property surrounding it, it does utilize its, its pool as a PE component. So as, you know, if we were to, when that pool reached its end of life cycle, and we were looking at saying, okay, we aren't going to redo the pool, how could we repurpose this space? We may need to look at Lincoln, at repurposing it in, in some additional physical education space. But what could that look like? I mean, there, you know, that's, physical education comes in many different components nowadays. So I think there's definitely opportunities out there to really create some great educational spaces.
Okay. Thank you. I had an additional question too, but I don't know if anyone else had a question about the pools before I hop to another slide?
Well, if you want to limit it to pools, I just want to give a little bit of historical perspective. Mrs. McCullough and I have been through this before. So this was one of my first, I was sharing this with Mr. Siegel before. It was one of my first votes as a school board member back at the old administration building, which was the old gym of the original high school. One of the pools, one of our middle school pools needed a million dollars worth of repairs. And we did this entire analysis, and the pools weren't, really weren't being used that much. They're not required. We are the only public school district in this area that has pools in the middle school. And some of us felt that it was time to just shut them down, because it was not really the best use of money. And there was a vote, and we, and those of us who felt that way, I was clearly one of those, lost four to three. And so we spent a million dollars on that pool. Now we're being asked to spend $2 million. It's not just a direct cost. $135,000 a year for the middle school pools is just the direct cost. That's the cost of treating the water. There's an indirect cost in having high humidity pools in a building. It results in higher maintenance costs over time. Do you disagree with that, Mr.?
I agree.
Insurance, yeah.
There's insurance issues. You know, we have started telling the administration that we really want to focus on achievement and closing achievement gaps and focusing on academic achievement. And I, you know, I'm, this is me talking, I just think there's better uses. And keep, and you keep in mind, we're talking about a school that, one of my kids is still at, and my wife teaches at. But I think there's a better use of money than spending $2 million on a middle school pool. So if we're limiting it to pool, that's, that's my comment on the pools. I've been, been through this. We went through the analysis. We got, you know, we asked for how much is it being used for PE back at least in 2011? It was a pretty low number, if I remember. They weren't really being used all that much. But people just wanted their pools. And they got them for another 11 years, anyway.
Thanks for the backstory.
I would also like to add that I've asked Wilson Bailey, our director of facilities, to revisit our analysis, because as you know, last month, we brought forward increases in our cost per kilowatt hour for electricity and our cost per therm for gas, as well as supplies, so chlorine, all those, all those expenses have went up. So we'll be updating that, that fiscal year 20 analysis that we did to, to look at what our current costs that we're seeing now.
And, yeah, I haven't seen it for a while. But for a while there, the other issue was, like, every time you turned around, somebody was issuing a new regulation on pool safety. And so you had another round of stuff that you had to buy to increase pool safety, because they're a little bit dangerous.
Ms. Mohammed, you had another question before he calls anyone else?
Um, yes. So for the schools that were originally scheduled for the summer 2022 schedule, were there, and I apologize, because I'm sure you told us this, but I can't recall, out of those schools, were we supposed to have any HVAC projects that we're supposed to start, or no?
So are you talking about the security vestibules, Ms. Mohammed?
I'm sorry. I'm looking at the slide where it's the ESSR to.
Yeah. So we are actually, we do have six HVAC projects going on right now. That's East, Flynn, Lincoln, Washington, and Riverdole, and West Middle School. So those are ongoing. We had planned on four additional schools, but those were the last to bid, and they came in so far overpriced, we pulled those, went back to the drawing board with our engineers to do some redesign and some value engineering, and now are putting those back out to bid. And those will start next summer.
Okay. So just curious, is there possibly with the ARP or ESSR funds, the ability to maybe give some temporary relief? Because I know I've gotten some feedback from some of these schools like West about how sweltering hot it is. So are we able to provide, like, portable air conditioners or anything just to alleviate, you know, the heat in those summer months?
Those become very difficult with the portable air conditioners to, to vent. And, and to be honest, we're, we're so close at West, they will have air conditioning next year. I don't know that it would be a pertinent investment for one summer. And that's why we've kind of moved back the start of our school year into September to kind of get past some of that, those weeks of heat.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification.
Mrs. McCullough?
On slide five, you didn't mention Bloom when you went under the roofing. It seems like Bloom's roof was done recently. So maybe that's just doors on there?
I'm, I'm sorry. Bloom is, yes, their roof was done during the last facilities master plan. It's just exterior door replacement at Bloom.
Okay. And on number nine, slide nine, where you talked about the early childhood and you talked about the matching funds, the three to 10%, I think it was, that's in addition to the 10 million?
That would be, yes. Our, the, the matching funds, if we received 10 million, would fall within three to 10%. So we're not guaranteed 10 million. We could receive up to $10 million in, in grant dollars.
Came a little confused. So we apply.
Correct.
A new early childhood building would be what, 22 million?
Yes.
Something like that?
Yes, that's what I'm predicting.
And so if we got half of that, if we got 10 million, it might cover half of that. But that's not 10% of 22 million. So I'm not.
That's not. And I'm sorry, Mr. Brown, can you help me with this question?
Yeah. So the, the way it works is, we would have to match, let's say our project costs $10 million, just so we can keep the math easy. We got all 10 million. Because we're a tier one district, we probably only have to come up with 3% of that amount. So we'd have to put in $300,000 if we had a $10 million project.
But Ms. McCullough, to your point, you know, if we did a new building, we're looking at close to $22 million. So then we would have to come up with the remaining dollars to, to fund that project.
Right. Everything up and above whatever the grant would be, we'd have to come up with.
Right. Well, and, and I'm going to tie that to the, your end conversation about the facilities master plan timeline, and coming up with a task force, which I appreciate the, the fact that we, that, you know, this is a whole bunch of recommendations. We don't, this is not a master plan. So, but if it says that you need to apply, that slide says by fall of, or they're being awarded by fall of 2022 on here, 60 million of it is to be awarded late fall of 2022. That's this year. I mean, we're not even, we don't have a task force. We don't have this. So what is our timeline on coming up with a final master plan? And then based on that, would the application for the early childhood be outside of then that master plan?
So if I remember correctly, the grant is due like October 16th.
That's correct.
So we would not get a facilities task force in place, nor really take a look at all of our district needs in, in that short of time to, you know, to bring the early childhood into consideration from a facilities master plan standpoint. At this, at this point, I don't necessarily have a timeline established, but it's something that I do want to work with Dr. Jarrett on, starting to identify task force members, so we can start this discussion. As I said, this is a discussion that we want to begin now as we're finalizing and working through our ESSR2 and ARP, ESSR HVAC upgrade projects. Because it does, if I recall, it was a two-year process the, the last time we did a facilities master plan. And, and to do a good plan, it, it takes about two years. So.
So in the meantime, will you be bringing forward a recommendation to the board for the application? Or do you apply for this and then we decide to accept it or not? Because the decision to accept would mean an expenditure on our part, which we don't know what it would be.
Yeah. So I do believe, I think we were, we would bring this forward prior to submitting the grant. I think we were looking at bringing it forward in September.
Right.
Or early October.
And I think this would be very similar to what they're working on with the. And I think this would be very similar to what they're working on with the buses. Just because we got it would not mean that we would have to accept it.
Okay. And then I'm going to weigh in on the track piece and ask a question before I do. Jefferson's track was just redone last year. Why did we not choose to go with the rubber when you did that?
That's a great question. It's not something, at the time, we were, you know, considering, we were just trying to bring it up to a practice facility level. Now we're looking at raising it another notch, basically.
Did we do something to the turf there as well?
We just, we regraded the turf, re-crowned the football field. It just was in very poor condition and then reseated.
Okay. I don't know where I stand on that one. You guys are so upset, but I'm, I mean, I can understand the difference in the practice in one, on one surface and then moving over to the other. But again, as Mr. Siegel said, the $5 million, so I'm sure there'll be more conversation on that. Would that be part of the master plan too? Are we looking at that as part of the master plan?
So I think that discussion, as I said, with the additional CPPRT dollars, if it was something that the board was interested in moving forward and exploring further, utilizing some of that CPPRT funds. But if it's not something the board is comfortable with, then I think it needs to move into the master plan discussion and, you know, having further discussion with athletics and.
So perhaps we need an action step where you delineate which one of these you're thinking about using this extra CCPRT money as compared to being part of the master plan?
I can do that.
Yeah. Would that be helpful to anybody else? Because I have, I'm not certain of which is which. Thank you.
I've got some, well, really more comments. So, you know, a couple of years ago, we were provided with a comprehensive facilities condition assessment and the numbers were staggering about our needs, facilities' needs over the next 10 years or 15 years. I mean, it was the sort of thing that you look at and you just think, like, where in the world is that money going to come from? And so, you know, one of my, I think, a little bit frustration is, so we had a $30 million windfall with CPPRT this year. And instead of applying it toward that, where's the money going to come from? We get new ideas to build new things. And I don't think we should be having any of this discussion without having those numbers from the facilities condition assessment report in front of us so that we can ask the question, well, what's your plan for this? And what's your plan for that? And how are we going to pay for this? And how are we going to pay for that? Because when I heard about that $30 million, the very first thing I thought was, well, there's 30 million that we can use to pay for some of those facilities' needs.
And that's why bringing back the roofs and exterior doors and the schools that I listed that are in design and prepared.
So, and the other, the next thing that I'll say, having lived through it, is having lived through the first facilities master plan, we were pretty heavily criticized from some quarters in this community for spending a disproportionate amount of that money on athletics. And I had a hard time defending myself and the board against that when I looked at the numbers, because we did. There were people coming to us and saying, why have you not created 21st century science labs at all of our secondary schools as part of your facilities plan? Have we created 21st century science labs?
No. We did field houses first.
No, we have not.
Okay. Are we talking about spending any of the $30 million windfall on creating 21st century science labs in our secondary schools?
So that was definitely a discussion point when we brought forward, the initial discussion in February, was looking at science labs at our middle schools and high schools.
Okay. Well, you can probably tell how I feel about the pools and the track. I think it's start, time for us to start talking about things like science labs. And I think it's time to start talking about what we need to do in this district to move the needle on student achievement. But that's my opinion. The security, hard to argue with security. I do just want to call out in case it sort of wasn't obvious. You know, there was this whole discussion about whether the classrooms at Uvalde were locked or unlocked. We have four schools that don't even have doors on their classrooms. That's the pods. So they are what they are, but hopefully somebody's can figure something out here. I've got grandkids at one of them.
What is the backstory on the pods and the doors?
Well, the backstory of the pods is that when the district did its facilities plan in the 1960s, that was new, that the pods were the new educational thing. That was going to be the wave of the future. And so we bought, we built pod schools all over town. And then it turned out that the noise level, have you been in any of those pod buildings? Were there actually classes in session? The noise level is incredible. And so they started building walls to close them off. So there's all these little temporary walls now, but they're not real classrooms.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Rollins appears to be a little irritated. And so maybe we should pump the brakes on moving so swiftly about the new upcoming things and slow down just a little bit and take a further look of what the future may look like or what that will impact, what impact will it make if we make those decisions?
Well, you're just looking for feedback at this point.
No, I think I've got plenty of feedback.
But for an action step, you would like to see a delineated master plan versus CCPRT spend?
Yep.
And an updated facilities condition assessment so we can see where that kind of, what kind of money is involved in that so that we can see if we need to spend some of that.
Yep.
So that then when we look at what those CCPRT funds versus upgrading buildings as compared to walls and science labs and everything else, but at least you would have that information. Were there any other action steps that anyone had for this part of the meeting? Okay, you have more to.
All right. Well, if we've flogged that horse to death, then let's move on to the preview of the consent items. Item A, Letters, the Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling. You always have to have an acronym. Letters is a professional learning suite that provides educators with deep knowledge to be literacy and language experts in the science of reading. Letters teaches the skills needed to master the fundamentals of reading instruction. That's kind of wide open. Does anybody have any questions about Letters? Mrs. McCullough?
Yeah, I, we bring programs like this because we want our teachers to improve their teaching, but who will be using this and can we require teachers to participate? I'm sorry, I didn't read the whole thing.
No, that's okay. This is actually a small cohort and they have ongoing training throughout the year. It is a group of people who have volunteered to be a part of it, so it is not mandated. This is really meant for people who have already sort of hopped on board with a fundamental understanding of the science of reading and they're ready to take their practice deeper. It fully supports everything we're doing in reading horizons and then comprehensive literacy through integrative literacy as well. So this is really just an extension opportunity for a small group of people to go deeper into their practice.
How many is the small group?
Oh, gosh.
And is this just elementary?
I believe it's somewhere between 20 and 30. I can get you an exact number. Yes, it is just elementary.
So it's $50,000 for 20 to 30 teachers for something that looks like it would be great for a lot more, but, thank you.
Item nine B, actually, B, C, D, and E are all the ARP S R, and you know what those are about. So specifically, B is with the Antoine Harris Group LLC. That program will serve RPS students at West Middle School and Roosevelt High School. The program will help students social, emotional well-being through mentoring services to help support our district's universal goals. C is with Life Church. That is going to be for K through 12 children but who live near RISA or Flynn. The services will actually be provided at RISA and Flynn, but it's for K through 12 as long as they live somewhere near there. D is Providence Baptist Church. Providence Baptist Church programming will serve RPS students attending Washington, Barber, Lathrop, and RISA. This program will help keep students engaged in extended time learning that supports our district's universal goals. Item E is with the Rockford Dance Company. Rockford Dance Company programming will serve RPS students at the Riverfront Museum Park. The program will help keep students engaged in extended time learning that supports our district's universal goals. Does anybody have any questions about any of those?
I have a question.
Ms. Mohammed, you were first.
Yeah, and this is just about the overall process of how we're allotting the ARP S R funds. So I'm noticing as we're getting more contracts to vote on, on the board level, that I'm seeing a lot of entities trying to service a lot of the same schools. So is, when we're, before they get to the board, like, is that a part of kind of like the rubric? Is that we're making sure that organizations are trying to service multiple schools versus the same ones?
Yes, that is the case. We're very intentional about geographically where the programs are serving. And at one point, I think we had talked about, you know, actually putting the zip codes. I think we had put zip codes in one of the presentations that show exactly where the programs are serving our students at.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Pearson?
Yes, so I noticed RISA will be serviced by both Providence and Life and with the notation that if it's close to Life. So, but I know that RISA is closer to Providence, both RISA, Barber, Washington, that's the neighborhood. So how will that work? Because both Life Church is listed for RISA and Providence.
I guess the way I would answer that is, I think it's one of our larger middle schools and there are plenty of, I think, opportunities for, I think it's just expanding the opportunities for the students in that school to have several options for programming. I don't think there's, I think that was the kind of thought behind it is, there's, they're both geographically located near that school and I think there are many opportunities to serve students in that school.
Okay, thank you. So the schools that, like Kennedy, McIntosh, what organizations are we partnering with that would be beneficial to those schools?
So we've had many, we can, I mean, some of the ARP S R programs that have come through, there are those that do serve those areas. I mean, we can go back and pull those up, but I think the ones that have previous come through certainly are in those areas. And I think, Kennedy, correct me if I'm wrong, Reggie, they have, I think, they have several, they have several, those schools have several programs through ARP S R that are servicing some of those call to accidents, those schools in particular. But we can provide you with the exact list of which programs that we have been approved that are servicing those schools.
Okay, and the organizations that?
And the organizations, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So Ms. Pearson, would it be fair to put on the action list an updated ARP S R list with the schools served? We might as well have all of them with the school serves, served, right? And then I would delineate which were just summer versus during the school year because the summer ones will be done soon, but we can see, would that be a?
Absolutely.
Helpful?
Thank you.
Okay.
Just a quick point of clarification, it's 41 teachers who are in the training for Letters and it's eight sessions throughout the year.
I have one more ARP S R question. In the event that an organization is trying to move forward with, you know, what they propose, like, say, for example, they're saying they want to serve a certain amount of students, if they're not able to engage that amount, does that affect the amount of funding that we approve them for?
Yes, so there are some very minimum standards. So I think if I understand your question, for example, I think 10 students is the minimum. And so, for example, if you could not do that, we would not move forward with the program. So there are some standards about the number of students and then there's progress monitoring that's going to go on as well to see that they are servicing the students that they said they would. So, yes, it could affect the amount prior to coming to, for board approval. To answer your question, yes, it could impact what they get.
So I guess that's where my question was coming in, when they're doing the reporting and if we see that they're not able to serve at least the 10, then that can potentially decrease their amount.
No, I would say not decrease, not only decrease the amount, but we would have to, you know, taken a serious consideration, is this a program that we want to move forward with? Because again, we think that's kind of the minimum standard that you should service at least 10 students. And if they can't hit that, then we'd have to have a conversation about, is this the right program to work with our students?
Okay, thank you.
If there's no other questions, that concludes the report of the Planning and Development Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Rollins. Excuse me. So I will present the Governance Committee. I have no new items for you. If we look at the consent items, I'm going to ask you to move down to 11C, which is the Administration and the Education Office Personnel Association, the EOPA, we refer to them as, reached a tentative agreement, that was last Thursday, and a new contract with four-year term. I should say that's when the EOPA voted on it, was last week. Some of the key changes include the insurance premiums for the PPO 1,000 Plan and the elimination of some ancillary benefits for retirees such as life and accident insurance. The group of employees did not receive a raise in fiscal year 22, so the parties agreed to a 6% increase for fiscal year 23. And that reflects the amount of the increase that the employees could have otherwise received for the prior year as well as the increase for the current year, at a 3.5% increase for fiscal year 24, a 3.0% increase for fiscal year 25, and a 3.0 increase for fiscal year 26. So the effective date of the new agreement would be July 1st of this year. It's already passed, but when we vote on it, it will be effective July 1st. I'm going to stop there. Are there questions about that? Because we'll be voting on that at our next board meeting. 11D is the recommendation that the district support the Rockford Area Economic Development Council, also known as RDEC, and its umbrella organization, the Great Rockford Growth Partnership, with a one-year investment of $10,000. Which is, correct me if I'm wrong, is that equal to what we did last, the previous?
I believe if I read this right, that the previous five years, it was a $25,000 commitment?
Okay. Four, five years or each year?
An annual investment of $25,000.
Okay, and we are, that was what the difference was, is that we're not looking at a five-year commitment. At this point, we're going to change to just an annual, on an annual basis, looking at the number.
Right.
So we're reducing it and looking at a term, the shorter term.
Right.
Thanks, David. Item 11E is a request for facility rental fee waiver in the amount of $411.25. Midwest family of Northern Illinois requesting to pay the nonprofit rental rate for their proposed 9/11 memorial climb at Swanson Stadium. This benefits the Greg Limmark Foundation, which is a non-for-profit, not-for-profit working to address the mental health of police officers and other first responders. Questions on that? I don't see any lights. Are there any other governance consent agenda items board wishes, wish to have polled for clarification or discussion? The other one's on there, Mr. Rollins, thank you.
Back on the R A E D C, I just, I guess I want to be clear on who we're supporting here and the total amount. So there's been this reorganization. There used to be an R A E D C and a chamber, and they now have a parent organization, which has some acronym that I can never remember. G R, thank you very much, GRGP. GR, thank you very much, GRGP.
Greater Rockford Growth Partnership.
Should have put a vowel on there somewhere. So this, and I think in the past, we've probably been members of the chamber and given something to the R A E D C. Is this for all three organizations? Is this just for R A D C? Are we sure we're not going to get another funding request from the GRGP?
Just for the R A E D C, sir.
Is the GRGP separately fundraising? Or are they staying out of that, and just the member organizations are going to fundraise?
So it, they are connect, I mean, they're, they're connected, and, but it's one, it's a one donation to both, that helps fund both organizations, so.
And are we going to be separately getting a donation request from the chamber? Is that still separate?
It is separate, but I don't anticipate that. I don't anticipate a separate ask from the chamber, because they're connected.
Okay.
They're kind, they're all together.
The letter does ask that we consider a two-year commitment, are we not recommending that? Is the administration not recommending that?
I'm sorry, honey.
The, the letter from Iner asks for a two-year commitment, is the administration not recommending that?
That, I'm unaware of that, I do not know the answer to that.
During the Governance Committee, I was told it would be one.
Okay, thanks.
I don't know if anybody noticed, under the consent agenda, we are also going to be looking at the public sale of the former Page Park and Stiles properties, because we took bids on those, correct, Mr. Phillips? You might just get.
Yeah, we, we did receive, or we did advertise for offers, we received one offer on Stiles, we received no offers on Page Park.
Okay, so we'll be looking at that and voting, well, we won't vote on Page Park at the next meeting, but we can vote on the Stiles, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct, there will be a resolution to accept the offer on Stiles.
And that was for solar, a company that is alternative energy?
Yes, yes.
Thought you'd be interested, I don't know. All right, okay, does anybody have any new items to bring to the board? We do not have any speakers. If there are, Ms. Pearson?
Yes, I have a question, so I'm unable to find a specific policy on ethics and compliance. I see policies where terminology of ethics and compliance is used, but not in, in regards to personnel or HR matters, where it relates to the district.
For personnel and HR, I'll put this on the action list?
Thank you.
I'm going to read this list, it got long this time, but I want to make sure everybody's covered, and if I miss any of yours, please let me know. So the ethics and competence policy for personnel and HR matters, the updated ARPESR with schools, which schools are served, the delineation of the master plan versus the CCPRT spend recommendation, or suggestions, and the facilities condition assessment updated, the Panorama survey results that we talked about earlier on during Finnick's, the definition of respect by students, also from her presentation. The, I, I will add the, this is an action item, but we won't bring it to you, the IASB resolutions will all be put on the October agendas for discussion, the discussion of non-tenure teacher renewal, the conversation on the social promotion on policy 6.280, and the inventory of trauma therapists at the high schools. Yes, did I miss anything? All right. If not, I'll entertain a motion and a second to adjourn.
To move.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor? Any opposed, same sign? All right, see you guys next week. And please remember to fill out your exit slip summaries, and Ms. Goldsmith will collect those, and thank you.